Public regular city council meeting to order at seven P M. Travis Pledge of Legis.
Pledge of Legis.
Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Rome.
Here.
Alden McGee.
Here.
Alden Carr. Alden Fairwell.
Here.
Alden Johnson.
Here.
Alden Manchoya.
Here.
Alden Ruthenberg.
Here.
Sixty three, your honor.
All right, we form. For presentation of general proceedings, we have a motion to approve the city council minutes within ten twenty twenty five. Is there a motion? Motion Alden McGee, second Alden Fairwell on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Rome.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Manchoya.
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg.
Aye.
Sixty three, your honor.
Motion carries. Public comments. As a reminder, the public comment period is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of the public comment period is for the mayor and the aldermen of the city to receive input from their community. It is in fact a one-way communication to the city council. The city's administration and department heads are available for discussions after the meeting. Sir, public comments?
Hey, good evening, mayor, and also to our city council members. I'll be clemens representing Mission Covenant Church. I have some announcements as it relates to activities that are forthcoming. We have our motorcycle blessing that's scheduled for Saturday, and that is June the twenty eighth, starting at noon. And we have our back-to-school block party that's scheduled for July the twelfth, and that time is from eleven to three. And then we have our wonderful crusade that we're planning for the month of July. And that'll be on the twenty sixth of July, and that time will be from noon to three P M. at Hart Park. And so we are definitely looking forward to all of our activities. And for your involvement and participation in coming out and supporting us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hey, how y'all doing? This is my first time to one of these meetings. Um, I'm one of the residents that live over in Greens of Blue Island. And it's, I guess with the spot where I live, you can attest to that, and you can attest to that too, Mark. Um, my windows, my cars, patio glass. I've been there eleven years and I've had, I got about twelve pictures in here where you can see it's bust straight through the window. So. For the most part, uh, it's been resolved, uh, as it relates to the financial part of it, but I guess this new system that they have or this new insurance that they're going with. These last couple of years, they have been denying the claims. And they say, oh, you live by a golf course, so this is what you have to deal with. In so many words, that's what the insurance letter said. However, this has become an issue because what if I walk to my car? Just so happened, I'm walking to my car. And one of those balls hit me in the head. If it can bust through. The windshield of my wife's car, my car, the patio glass, if it can do that type of damage, what type of damage do you think it could do to a human being? I think the issue is so light and they look at it as being light, but I'm gonna make it a big issue at some point. If I have to sue the city because this is getting out of control. I know he's probably tired of seeing me because I'm tired of seeing him. I know Ted used to be tired of seeing me because I was tired of seeing him. I'm tired of going to the same individuals about the same issue. And nobody seems, I was like, oh, well, you live by a golf course, but my house is a hotspot. For some reason, and I have the pictures here, for some reason, I have the most damage that's done to my property. And it seem like it's not, nobody's taking it serious. Nobody's looking into putting something, maybe a net just in that hotspot. Nobody else has these issues. My neighbor next door, he just started having issues with his windows being bust, and they gave him hell. They denied his claim as well. We have proof of the balls just sitting all over the yard after the glass is damaged. After the siding of the house is damaged. You can come over there now. I can take all the other, open it now, and you can see the siding of the houses. Damage. The wood is damaged from the golf balls. So if it can do this type of damage, what happens if I just want to sit on my patio and get some fresh air? And a golf ball comes and knocked me upside my head, and my head, and my, or my wife's head. And then it becomes a bigger issue and say, oh, well, he did complain. He did say something, but. From the city of Blue Island, we would like to give flowers to the dead. This is an issue. Now, I don't, I take it serious. At this point, I'm sick of it. I am sick of it. And I know you sick of me. I've come up there probably, it's probably been the last few years I've been seeing you, correct? When you were over there, Ted, how many times did you see me, correct? A lot of times. About the same issue. And nobody is doing anything about it. Does somebody, do, do I have to die? Or just somebody walking their dog? Get hit across the head and die from one of those golf balls. Is that what has, that's, that's what has to happen for y'all to do something about it? It's serious. It's a very serious matter. And it's getting out of control. And I'm the one that gotta pay for it, whether with finances or with my life, probably one day, because this is serious. It is very serious, right? Right, Mark? Is it serious? That was my question. Is it serious? Yes or no? I guess it's not serious. That go my ass.
Is there any public comments?
Hello, my name is Michelle Wilson. I'm with the Sound Broadband. Hopefully, most of you know who we are. Because we put a lot of money into this community, upgrading the services to fiber. Um, I'm here because you have an event. I think I probably shouldn't talk to you. You have an event on Saturday that is the Blues and Barbecue Event. And I'm sorry for asking, but I would love to be a part of the event. Because we really need to get more brand recognition out about who we are and how great our product is. Um. If you don't know, we have been in Blue Island for a few years now. We upgraded your community to fiber between. ALSA, Blue Island, Evergreen, um, Midlothian. We put over thirty million dollars into this, um, upgrade of the, you know, the internet services. Fiber is the fastest and the best internet that you can have on the market, and your constituents, your residents, they get the best of it. So. I would like to be a part of the event. What we will do is we will offer all of your residents three months free. We will give them free installation. We will give them free equipment, and we will also give them a hundred dollar either gift card or a hundred dollar credit to their bill. For those people that are visiting, that may not live in Blue Island, we will offer the same thing, but they would get a hundred dollar credit if they provide us with a bill from a competitor. Uh, we also have trinkets that we're gonna give away. We're gonna give away, if you allow us, wrap off a hundred dollars. To the residents. We do that through a Q R code. We collect their information, and then our company will send them an email. And then we have other things like plants. There's some plant lady on ninety plants. I found that people like plants at these events. So I'm just asking for permission. I spoke to Dexter. Um, he said it might be okay, but I wanted to respect the board and ask you guys if you would allow me to, um, be a part of the event on Saturday. I have my own tent. I have my own tables. I have everything. All I need is the opportunity and space to make sure that your residents can get the best internet that there is offered. Anybody have any questions? Okay, hopefully I will hear from Dexter with an answer, and I appreciate your time. I'm gonna leave Dexter with information and my cards. So that if you have any questions, you can ask Dexter, right? Your Dexter?
Yes.
We have.
We look at like.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Not moving on?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I can't talk because I get a little motion when I talk to a lot of people looking at me. Uh, I mean. Uh, my name is Central Minister. You know, I have a couple of buildings here in Blue Island, okay? So I'm like landlord. And we had this problem that, that since they changed the meter. At the buildings, uh, I've been getting the minimum payments on it, and I've been going to the office when I wanna pay the bills. And this is, uh, oh, it's something wrong with the meter. So they sent more time, they sent, uh, a guy to check the meter and the reader. And, uh, they, they say it's nothing wrong with that. Well, a year later, I'd be paying every month the minimum payments, and every month I keep on asking. They fixed the, the problem, and this is not, and every, this is, when's our next month? All of a sudden, I got a bill almost thirteen thousand dollar, one-year water bill, and that's a nine unit. So I'm average, you know, four fifty, five hundred, five fifty, you know, depends the days. And that's almost a thousand dollar a month. That with the water bill, and, and that's a little outrageous. I've been talking to Mark a couple of times. Okay, you want some, put him in a, uh. On payment plan, but I think that's a little outrageous, pay almost thirteen thousand dollar with the water bill. So I, I don't know what the issue is, and, and three weeks ago, a month ago, I got the rest thing on it. That disconnect the water, so let's see, Mark, and they, since that's okay. And, and I've been going back and forth with this, so I don't know if we can. Look into it, or what the problem is. The technician came over there, the water department came over to check it, and. There's nothing wrong with that, I guess, because they went with the new meters, and they kind of figure out how to read it. But that's the problem that I got.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Moving on, we have a hundredth birthday proclamation for Idemay Walsh. Could be with us tonight, but it's your sister, right?
Mother.
Mother? Right. So, a resolution congratulating Idemay Walsh on the occasion of her hundredth birthday. Whereas, City of Blue Island takes great pride in recognizing individuals who have made meaningful contributions to the community, who have represented during spirit, rich history of our city. And whereas, Idemay Walsh was born May twelfth nineteen twenty five to John Gertrude Rollman. And raised in Blue Island Orchard Street. And whereas, she is the proud graduate of Blue Island High School. And following her graduation, began her professional life as a secretary for one of the vice presidents in public service. And whereas, Idemay married her high school sweetheart, Dan Walsh, upon his return from serving honorably as United States Marine in the Pacific during World War Two. And whereas, together they shared fifty wonderful years of marriage and raised two children, Randy and Pam, making their home on Greenwood Avenue in Blue Island. Right, Idemay continues to reside today. And whereas, Idemay dedicated herself to being a loving and devoted stay-at-home mother until their daughter Pam reached high school, at which time she began part-time work and then billing. For anesthesiologists at St. Francis Hospital. And whereas, following her retirement, Idemay generously volunteered her time. In the gift shops at both St. Francis Hospital and later Metro South Medical Center until its closure. And whereas, she has been an active and faithful member of St. Philip Lutheran Church in Blue Island, has enriched the lives of many through her involvement in service. Whereas, Idemay has long enjoyed gardening, traveling, and above all, spending cherished time with her grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And whereas, on May twelfth twenty twenty five, Idemay Walsh reached the incredible milestone, milestone of her hundredth birthday. A celebration of life well-lived and a testament to her strength, grace, and enduring presence in the Blue Island community. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, that we hereby extend our warmest congratulations and best wishes to Idemay Walsh. On the occasion of her hundredth birthday, we honor her for a century of love, service, and dedication to her family and her community. And we have a motion and a second to put this in the record. Motion Alden Johnson, second Alden Roll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A presentable copy will be presented to the family, and the city clerk will call you when it's ready after, um, everybody signed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on. All of these are reappointments, with the exception of the vacancy on the library board. I'll list all the names. I'd like to just do a hundred one motions, but it's, uh, all reappointments. So I'll start from Civil Service Commission. We're reappointing Gregory Robinson for a three-year term. On the fire pension board, David Haywood and Mark Pastora. On the library board, we have. Rita Brown, Sarah Nunes, Anita Kenny, and the vacancy, uh, to appoint Nancy Thompson, former alderman, to fill out the vacancy. On the police pension board, both for two-year terms, reappointment, reappointment of James Johansson and, uh, we. Is there a motion? Motion Alden Johnson, second Alden Ruthenberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye. But just because of civil service commission, Sandra, you have a quick question. I know there's been some interest in the police department about, uh, when there's gonna be a sergeant's exam. Uh, and the civil service commission hasn't met in a while. Do you know anything?
I think they have one.
They have not had, had it, uh, yet.
Yeah, do you know, I guess there's some interest in.
First Monday of each month.
Right, most of it has been two or three months that there's been one. Has that been one?
Yeah, so I anticipate probably meeting in July or August.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Economic development presentation, Alden Roll.
Yes, I, I had, uh, some slides, but I don't have access to the screens. That's why I feel pretty boring. Uh, so when there's just time, I just wanted to sort of go over conceptually what I had hoped to present, and. Uh, that is, as regards economic development, uh, we. In a number of different ways, sort of ad hoc, they gone facets of economic development. And so this would be about the. Just a proposed method for. Developing consensus around economic development, uh, as a council, so. That could just be dedicated time, uh, that we, you know, make in our standing committee structure. Uh, it doesn't matter. Uh, so long as we just sort of have some framework and dedicated time, uh, to discuss it. Um, and I, I can give, uh, these out as a resource, but, um. The sort of major advantage to this is, uh, by establishing a vision, uh, and a process. Uh, it helps to transform ideas and ad hoc practice into measurable, actionable outcomes. This gives us improved capability for delegating workloads as we grow. Uh, whether that's expanded city staff or bringing on outside vendors and contractors. Uh, it provides a clarity of shared vision, ensuring that all stakeholders are aligned, and improves collaboration and efficiency. I know we have at least. Uh, one developer interested, uh, coming into town, who's already asked about, you know, what is that long-term vision? What is our sustained commitment? To economic development look like? So it's a perfect example, uh, of where having something like this developed is useful. It also allows us to, um, improve continuously. Uh, and have better accountability by simply being able to express what are desired outcomes, uh, and the results were. And so, for example, in our inaugural effort, maybe all we would do is draft something like a mission statement. Uh, so that would just be a very high-level characterization of what our vision, uh, for economic development is. And then we can go through and, and sort of create, um, supporting goals, uh, under that. So for example, one supporting goal. May concern itself just with the incentives, uh, that we are prepared to offer for businesses. Um, another could simply be defining what types of businesses that we would like to attract, uh, to the city. And so, right, and so. It doesn't have to be this way, but again, I think so long as we have some formal process for drafting. This framework that we can share, again, not only with staff, but with any contracted vendors. Uh, as we grow our economic development initiative. Uh, that's, that's my recommendation. So, again, I can pass these slides around, but it really just shows how we might build this outline format. Uh, so that we have a sort of living document. To guide our economic development. Uh, so that's, that's all I wanted to say, but, uh, were there any questions?
Alden Roll, Alden Fairwell.
Yeah, just, uh, is part of your thought that we should have an economic development director?
You know, I, I'm not sure. I, I would be open, uh. To really any sort of format, but I think, you know, however we chair committees could also work, um. But yeah, I don't, I don't have a particular thought in terms of.
Yeah, okay, I just, I, I asked because I, I do understand and appreciate that many of the folks in the administration and the mayor are busy. Working on these kind of things, and that's great. Uh, but I also know that we, everybody only has so much time. And, uh, it would be, I would think it would be most effective, to me, it seems like potentially, I know there's money involved, but if there was someone who this was their sole purpose. Uh, and, you know, I mean, I, I don't mean to suggest that anyone who works for the city isn't worth it, because people all are. But this would be a position that would actually be generating, you know, potentially significant income for the city and, and benefit to the residents. So it would be. Uh, you know, a good investment to be considered, and I, I'm not saying I think it actually must be done, but I can see that there's a case for it, so.
Sure, thank you.
Would it be possible to, uh, and to, uh, commit to the whole meeting, uh? Now, if we, uh, session.
I think, um, we have an economic development position now.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, um, setting, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm like that, Josh is. Question.
It's not problem. We put our next committee to hold. I like the idea with starting off the mission statement, because I think we all know what we want, we're right. Any other alderman questions for Alden Roll? Matt?
Well, sorry, Mary, I did just want to add to that. In the vein of economic development, um, I would like to propose, just for discussion and consideration. Uh, a, a teacher stipend to where. You know, we would look to attract, uh, teachers who would be working in District one thirty or District two eighteen. Uh, you know, it could be structured over time, but again, we, I think the idea is to encourage folks like that, uh, who do maybe. Want to teach here, uh, to also live here and to be able to, again, just offer some sort of stipend. So, uh, that's my first official entry into the economic development discussion.
Thank you. Moving on to the second page, agenda, we have motion to approve payroll dated June twentieth twenty twenty five, the amount four hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred thirty-six thousand and thirty-nine cents. Is there a motion? Alden McGee is our second. Alden Roll on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Rome.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Manchoya.
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg.
Aye.
Sixty three, your honor.
Carries. Under the theme, we have motion to approve accounts capable dated June twentieth twenty twenty five, the amount four hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and nine cents. Is there a motion? Alden Roll, seconded by Alden Ruthenberg on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Rome.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Manchoya.
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg.
Aye.
Sixty three, your honor.
Thank you. And as, um, we mentioned, committee the whole in the past, and I will start. Describing some of these motions that seem vague on an agenda, and also reminding and the public to know that the state is making the city move from. To a twenty twenty-one building code across the board. So you're gonna see many of these changes over the next few meetings, as our department heads have, um, bruised it and made their criteria and changes to it. Uh, there's some on the agenda tonight that we talked about, uh, at the last committee. You'll see some probably over the next few months. Uh, right now, we're operating under the twenty twelve building code, so we have to move to the twenty twenty-one, uh, very quickly now, so you'll see a lot of these changes coming up. So the first one is an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter seventy-two parking regulations for the code of Blue Island. This is to limit auto shops from storing vehicles longer than fourteen days. That are not being currently worked, worked on or being repaired, and that do not have designated parking spaces or are blocking egress and ingress to the property for safety reasons. So, that is what this one is. Is there a motion? Motion Alden Roll, second Alden Manchoya on the question. Clerk, please do the roll call.
Alden Rome.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Manchoya.
Aye.
Alden Ruthenberg.
Aye.
Sixty three, your honor.
Okay, under the, leaving ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter ninety-two fair housing for the city of Blue Island, um, this was, um. We have to adopt certain anti-discrimination code and languages. We added some more, committee of the whole. Uh, so we're not going to, uh, discriminate against gender, gender identity, military. Discriminating against gender, gender identity, military discharge status, parental status, housing status, immigration status, and order of protection status. We also, we, uh, conveyance. Uh, we are, uh, allowing conveyances within family or husband dies and the spouse is still living. That's not going to have to go through the whole process. Our code before said you had to go through the whole process. Now it's limiting to where there's nobody in the house. We keep on moving and taking, you know. Right. Water it down, but from this whole thing down here. And, you know, it's transfer, transfer, Oliver McGee, was there something else that was in there?
There was, uh, water meter.
Oh, the water meter?
Yes.
So we, basically, we are, I point of sale, the property, the, if the water meter hasn't already been upgraded to the current. Coded water meter, it has to be upgraded at the time of sale. Many, many towns are. As opportune time to do it, new owner hasn't moved in yet. Any questions? Need a motion, uh, we have. Motion, motion. All of them, Johnson, second one, Oliver McGee on the question.
Again, if this, uh, again. My leading, uh, concerns these, they move back through to a, a additional situation that we didn't cover before. Um, but I'm telling that, you know, it's a.
We've always.
So, um.
We did the last stop, right?
Yes. That's right.
Yeah.
There's also just one, um, small amendment that we need to make in regards to the. The water meter repair and Mark, you just to claim a brief, please, you make the amendment on the floor, the amended ordinance.
I believe it's, uh, section L of the ordinance as it relates to the AMR compatible water meter. They're just a slight change in language. So it would say, um. This, the seller has purchased a city-supplied water meter. We don't want, um, people purchasing a water meter from. You know, uh, another supply shop. Uh, so it would be, as, they would be purchasing a city-supplied water meter and then the cost of water meter should be according to the city's fee and fine schedule which is already in there.
All right, any, um, issues with the amendments? Oliver Fairwell. I just, since we're, yeah, the subject of water meters, uh. I, it's probably the thing that I hear most often, uh, is concerns from people about water bill issues. Whether or not they're valid or not. Um, and I know there've been some issues with the water meters and the new meters and so forth, uh, just curious where we are on this point in terms of, uh, having that all resolved, in terms of how the leaders are communicating with the. The billing agency and so forth and so.
So we replaced, uh, all of the meters on the commercial route, which was route ninety-nine for all the commercial meters. Um. And the new meter styles, uh, require like a multiplier if it's a four-inch or greater, um. There has been a few kings in the road, you know, we have been working out most of them, um. You know, I'm always willing to work with people too and it's better explain that water and stuff like that, so. I.
Okay, okay. I keep referring them to.
Yep.
I know, uh, uh, Mark, uh, if you want, also you mentioned to me, and I think I saw the graph, we've replaced more meters in the last few years than the last ten years combined.
Yeah, so I actually put together a chart showing the water meters that have been replaced from nineteen eighty-three through present. Um. And, uh, the number of water meters from about two thousand six through two thousand twelve. We were on average about three fifty to maximum about six hundred water meters, uh, in twenty thirteen, that dropped to about thirty water meters per year. Um, and then we started replacing the water meters beginning in November of twenty twenty-three and we've been sixty water meters that we replaced since then. And we're continuing to go through all the individual rents as well, aside from the commercial route.
Thank you. Do any other questions? We got a roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Thank you. The next one is regarding, um. Updating on what is permitted, basically. If the contractors have to have bonded insurance, you don't need to pay for a permit if you're painting your house, but if you're hiring a housing company, they need to make sure they come in. And make sure they have insurance and bonded to protect the city, protect the resident. And is that the other language?
Yeah.
Any questions? I mean, we need a motion first. Motion, all in rolls, second one, McGee on the question. Oliver McGee, uh, just, uh. Change, if you. Uh. Village. He said.
That's the second time today I did that, because thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, I did every time. Thank you, thank you, Oliver.
I will update that.
Any other questions? Oliver does.
Yes, uh, so to be a, uh. Be a contractor. Or a CA, or you would have to have insurance, you're saying?
That's the code now.
Right, yeah. Okay.
It just clarified, uh, painting of houses, basically.
Right.
Yeah. So you still aren't paying for a permit fee, but we want to make sure if you're hiring outside contractor, they are bonded. But if you're doing it yourself, you're doing it yourself still.
Right, right. But I know some people become contract, you know, uh, G, DCs. Uh. Pick their own contractors what they want, but I'm glad it's in language stating. That they have to be licensed upon.
And fingered, right? Yeah. All right, uh, here's your roll call.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Here's the next one, pretty cut and dry. If you have a business in town, we want to verify that you have insurance and liability. A lot of stuff's insurance and liability today, but we want to make sure you have current, up-to-date liability insurance if you own a business in town. That's the language update. So motion. Motion, Oliver Fairwell, second one, Oliver Roll on the question. Or please do the roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
There is. Next one is. Oh, Oliver Johnson.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had a question on, on that. Do we actually have particular people or, or a, uh, entity that actually goes out and. Have the, uh, businesses, uh, have their business license updated or even if they even have a, uh, business license?
So as of two years ago, especially this past year, the clerk's office is responsible for renewing business licenses and yes, every time they do an inspection, either health inspection or building inspection, they ask for that and they look up the record file before they go up there.
Yeah, because I had an issue, uh, with a, uh, I guess it was a, uh. Like, the scout was renting out different spaces in this, in, in the area off Harrison. And, uh, wasn't telling the people that, you know, okay, go over the business, you need a business license, which kind of goes hand in hand. And so those people were in there for like four or five years that had business license.
A lot fell through the cracks before us. So it is being definitely new soul more. I've signed more business licenses, I have the ink signature on each one of these than I ever had before in this past year. Any other questions? We do roll call? Roll call.
We did too.
Lot of language, yeah.
We did motion, I see.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Uh, I just came with the question of that.
Okay, all right. Angie, all right. This is a resolution to put three properties for sale, disposition out to bid. It's not to approve any bidders, just permission to put it out to bid. Um, and some of these you recognize, we put them out to bid before with no decent bidders, we're going to try again. First one would be a vacant lot at one twenty-eight oh one Lincoln, a vacant lot at twenty-nine twenty on thirty-ninth place. And eighteen fifty-nine Baroque, which is the old, uh, anchor pole, again. So is there a motion? Oliver Ruthbergs, I call Oliver McGee on the question.
Question, Johnson. Uh, on these properties like that, Golden Alley and, uh, this, in my area off one hundred and thirty-ninth place. Is it going to be able to be, have people going to have access to go in and, uh, look at the properties? See what they're getting into?
Yes, they have in the past, the place contacts our city administration, they set up an appointment.
Okay, cool.
And in the, in the bid, they don't have information of that.
Okay.
And the questions, if not, roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Next one is motion to approve the low bidder of Accur Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five Green Alley Improvement Project. Low bidder came in over a hundred fifty thousand less than the estimate of seven hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars. So this is three separate green alleys. The city, is there a motion? Oliver Roll, second one, Oliver Fairwell on the question. Put Oliver Johnson.
Yes. Do these guys have any experience with, uh, with Blue Island, with putting these alleys in?
Not in Blue Island, but the, uh, Burke Engineering, they have done many other towns, the towns that he's called and got their recommendations, they did phenomenal jobs.
Okay, but that's just action because a couple of alleys that was put down in my ward, they didn't finish the apron on. You know what I mean? Going to, to, to the garage. And so you got the alley and then you got a, a vacant spot.
I would let, uh, my troder know about those.
Oh, okay.
They're still doing. Odds and then alleys in town. We have, we did our alley project this summer, so let's make sure those are on.
Okay, I guess. Okay, yeah. Yeah, no points.
All right. Oh, roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Here is. For I, an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter one fifty building regulations for the code of Blue Island. This is to officially move us from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one international building code.
Sorry, that was the amended ordinance placed in front of you guys today, um, instead of offending to, uh, a national electrical code that we recommended that we. Uh, by our electrician, Jerry Mercy, I believe, I'm. That the twenty eighteen city of Chicago code would be much more applicable and useful for the city of Blue Island, so we amended that and placed that for abuse of the motion today as this ordinance would be for the amended ordinance.
Just for the electrical.
Just for the electrical. Everything else, they, they.
Okay. Your motion? Oliver Roll, second one, Oliver McGee on the question. Or please do the roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Motion carries. For J, an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending market-plumbing for, for Blue Island. This stuff related to, uh. Current addition, we're just going to say, the only state plumbing code, current additions, we're just adding current addition. The ordinance, is there a motion? Oliver Roll, second one, Oliver Fairwell on the question. Or please do the roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Carries under K, a resolution for the city of Blue Island. Point, rise and proving proposal for fire hydrant maintenance and testing from the Emmy symptoms and Emmy Simpson. Um. For the year of twenty twenty-five, test and maintain, uh, fire hydrants, it's thirty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars, and this. For, take us through twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion? Oliver Johnson. Second one, Oliver Roll, all on the question, Oliver Fairwell.
Yeah, just, uh, curious, we don't, normally it seems like, you know, uh, contract to start out. But, because here's what's the reason, this particular case.
Think it's always been three year, I know it might get answered. They do, I know they, I asked this before, I'm guessing, all of this, they do zones. Not all of our times, they want to be connected systems.
Yeah, this is going to allow us to, uh, lock in prices, so that's going to give us a benefit there, but, um, this is going to bring us, uh. We're going to flush the whole system every year and we're going to still do the maintenance, uh, quarterly. Every four, yeah, one zone, every four years, but it's going to, uh, help us with our ratings.
Thank you, I guess, obviously first of all, performance issue, we, we may be able.
Yeah, no, they're, yeah, they're, they're good, yeah.
Any questions? Or please do the roll.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya. Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Curious. The next are all coming out of PZDA, it was discussed in committee, but the first one is an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter one sixty-five. Coordinates regarding recycling facilities to allow and zone a recycling facility. At that location and then follows with the following motion, so we have to one at a time. Um, so is there a motion for this? Oliver Johnson's involved, we're going to be on the question. Oliver McGee.
Um, so I believe, uh, at the last meeting. Oliver Fairwell, you all had a question with the, with the recycling.
Okay, yep, I did, um, it's pretty interesting. So both these are, I'm asking a question for both of us. Okay, motion for both of these, they're on the same recycler. It's all indoors, it's small appliances, it recycle pieces of small appliances, I guess it's started in California, now it's becoming more modern, more common throughout the states. It's very, it's very, current economic developer, very economically friendly. There's a brochure that incentive you something before the meeting, but basically taking apart little appliances and breaking down the pieces and setting them off to be reused. And everything's inside. But. I didn't ask that question. And PZDA put a lot of restrictions in our ordinance, so. Lot of things that can. All right, is there a motion?
Oh, we got it.
All right, so I got so much talk, did I go this long, that's right. All right, roll call, please.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Yeah, that's, Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Here's M is the exact same business that's allowing that location to be operating as the recycling facility, thirty-three oh one Wyreton Road. Is there a motion? Oliver Roll, second one, Oliver Fairwell on the question. Or please do the roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
All right, moving on to N. An ordinance for the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter one seventy-five, an ordinance regarding upstairs dwellings, which allows one. Residential unit above any commercial unit. And then it follows along with the same things for the address where we talked about. So is there a motion? Oliver Roll, second one, Oliver Matoya on the question.
Question, Oliver Johnson, uh, you said only, there's only one unit above each commercial?
That's what we're mentioning.
Because I was looking at like the borough, oh, the Golden Alley, the Anchor Bowl, I think they had, what, several parks?
Yeah, because it's been taking more than six months. All goes out the window, if they wanted to do anything in there, they had to go through the whole process again.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Or please roll call.
Oliver Roll.
Aye.
Oliver McGee.
Aye.
Oliver Fairwell.
Aye.
Oliver Johnson.
Aye.
Oliver Matoya.
Aye.
Oliver Rutenberg.
Aye.
Six eyes, your honor.
Here's, oh, which is related to the previous one, allowing a one-unit construction, one twenty-three oh one western. Which is the state farm location on the corner, point third western. Is there a motion? Motion, Alden Roll, second Alden Berg on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alden Roll.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden Johnson.
Hi.
Alden Matoya.
Hi.
Alden Rupert.
Hi.
Six eyes, your honor.
Here's P, in ordinance for city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, granting a special use permit. Uh to continue a two family use inside a residential one single family uh area located twenty three thirty six hundred twenty second place. And we may specifically put in the special use if it only carries forward to this current owner, if the current owner decides to sell it, it goes to the same process. Your motion? Motion for Alden Fairwell, second Alden Roll on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alden Roll.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden Johnson.
Hi.
Alden Matoya.
Hi.
Alden Rupert.
Hi.
Six eyes, your honor.
Here's our Q. In ordinance for city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, granting a special use permit at twenty nine forty six Wyreton, uh Wyreton to operate a motor vehicle service repair. Uh within an unlimited industrial industrial district located twenty nine forty six Wyreton Road. Is there a motion? Alden Roll, second Alden McGee on the question. Alden McGee. Auto shop, I don't have any answer for that. Are they here tonight? You wanna answer that question? Yes.
Hi, everybody. Uh it would be truck repair shop, yeah. I mean, it's it will be probably seven people in the shop and uh seven people in office.
Any other questions while he's up there? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
So are you repairing vehicles there?
Yes, um we would operate um um. Trucking company from there and repair our trucks. As uh our last uh board meeting, we mentioned that we're not doing a part trucks in front. And also we heard today about the parking problem and in front of repair shops. And uh we're gonna pay much rent, it's a few blocks away. I think it's in Alse, a few blocks away, big, big storage parking for 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 trucks and that's what we're gonna do.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alden Roll.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden Johnson.
Hi.
Alden Matoya.
Hi.
Alden Rupert.
Hi.
Six eyes, your honor.
Motion carries. Under mayor's announcements, I just do an updates. They started the recompiling program in the city of Blue Island. I did make a post on this, it was pretty exciting. They um. Uh it's an unusual process. If you haven't seen it already, they'll be coming through your neighborhood. And it's uh it's it's like seal coating, but it's supposed to look cleaner after the sand is all picked up. But um it does add five to ten years on average to newly paved roads. So we would, as the city council discussed before, along with crack sealing, um. Cause roads have to be within a certain year for the wrecking work. Any roads that are over two or three years old, we're doing a crack sealing. But going forward, our engineer is aware, streets, for example, that were done last year, we'll go up and bid next year for recompiling. So we're gonna continue this process, waiting one or two seasons and then going right following up with the recompiling. As of right now, I'm satisfied, the company is doing meticulous, they're working with our police department and public works, making sure cars are moved. Um as efficiently as possible and they're going through and even a section I thought that was missing, I was by the time I ran around the block, uh. They were already back there touching it up. So it seems like the company is very diligent and making sure every square inch is covered product. So that is going on. And then we also went off the bid for crack ceiling. We haven't got a start date yet. Those are streets that are older than the last three or four years. And then um we are going out to bid again for the C D B G project for Irving Avenue in the northeast corner of town. They were getting the grant to redo several blocks of that street. And our alley project, as I mentioned earlier again, they are majority done. But there is some hangouts out there, like the three green alleys we just approved tonight. So those people are probably asking, I know they've asked me, and on their alley was skipped because they're gonna get a really nice alley. Um that's all gonna be done this season and then uh Mike has a list of uh of actually a couple surprises. Like we figured, the valleys we forgot existed or didn't exist or were any of those at all existing. So um again, we're gonna keep our pledge that every alley in town is going to be repaired uh this year. So I'll keep you guys posted if anything comes up, but if you do see anything missing at this point, it's a good time to let Mike know because they are majority now. If if they already know about it, they know about it. That's my announcement, city clerk.
Um Saturday is free busy. We have a N C B golf outing cause at one o'clock at the Meadows. We have barbecue and smooze at the John D Reader Rec Center at one o'clock till dusk. We have the motorcycle blastings at noon at the Chicago Church. Uh the farmer's market is back on Wednesdays at the Blue Island Beer Company. The uh produce bro- bros have been brothers have been um. Had some problems the last couple of weeks, but they promised we'd be back on Wednesday at the lunch beer company. And there will be a T G I F on Friday. Fourth of July parade that um we're gonna be finalized um the next couple of days. We've been um a lot of new attractions and the fireworks will be at dusk. We will have some food vendors down there and we'll have some music starting at seven.
Thank you. City treasurer, we approve the May twenty twenty five territory report, it's included in the packet. We in a motion? Alden Fairwell, second Alden Roll on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alden Roll.
Hi.
Alden McGee.
Hi.
Alden Fairwell.
Hi.
Alden Johnson.
Hi.
Alden Matoya.
Hi.
Alden Rupert.
Hi.
Six eyes, your honor.
Here's, we do have a short executive today, given things said. City administrator, support.
Evening, everyone. Um so I wanted to, just a few minutes to address uh an issue that probably have seen in the news. Uh and just give a brief update about kind of what we've been informed of and what some of the things that the administration and the police department have done to address it. So you've probably seen some news reports, uh this is specifically in relation to um the potential misuse of flock cameras. Uh in suburban, suburban municipalities, specifically the stories have centered on out of state law enforcement that. Uh have potentially been accessing Illinois cameras to conduct investigations that may not align with our values and priorities. So uh the that these reports, uh in a couple of different suburbs prompted the police department administration to do a full review of our policies and practices. Surrounding the use of these flock cameras. So just to give a quick review, if I remember, flock cameras are license plate readers. Uh they search for a specific license plate or a specific make and model of a vehicle and they are connected via network with neighboring municipalities. Uh who also utilize the flock system. So this allows our police to identify and locate a specific license plate. So in the case of a carjacking, for example, uh or uh search for a specific model and make of a car to match a plate when they're they're uh doing an investigation. So Blue Island is roughly one of two hundred and fifty municipalities in Illinois that use flock cameras. Uh pretty much all of our neighbors, including everyone we touch utilizes these, and they have proven to be so uh effective. Uh as a law enforcement tool, specifically when it comes to things like carjacking, carjacking and car theft cases. Um so Blue Island first engaged flock system uh through one of this council, I believe in twenty twenty two. Uh the system was implemented by former chief Farr and deputy chief Schultz at the time. Uh and then at the time that the at this council approved these cameras, there was a a good amount of discussion around how they would be used. And what the policy that would dictate and guide your usage, okay? So the policy that was adopted at the time is currently under review based on the information that we've uh been informed of, mostly through the media. Um but within this review that we've had with the police department, uh and I would remind that, you know, our 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 acting chief and commander Sepesi who oversee this. Um you know, had been in the in the saddle less than thirty days when this uh news story came out, so um the. Policy that was adopted is under review, but here's a few notable things that we found as it relates specifically to this story, okay? So when our flock flock system was first engaged, there was an option to be included in a function called the national lookup. So this allows any participating municipalities who have opted into the national lookup to access data for the local cameras of other municipalities involved in the national lookup. Based on our policy, we believe that the national lookup function should have been disengaged from our flock cameras. It was not. We have since disengaged the national lookup function. Okay, we have also revoked all out of state access to our cameras until we can do a more thorough review and update our policies and practices to reflect. Uh what we want to have happen with cameras and what we don't. Uh so the P V uh police department uh has already begun implementing a more robust policy. Every license plate search now conducted moving forward will include its own case number and reasons for the search. Prior to this, you needed one or the other and allowing for some vague searches to be done. Um now this will create a better, more accountable record of every search that's done. Uh so the existing policy calls for audits every six months, starting in May, we are now conducting monthly audits. Each alderman has a copy of the of the May monthly audit, we'll continue providing those moving forward. We're reviewing some other policies that Cook County municipalities have adopted, uh and we're using that to. Crib language that we think is gonna best inform a a new and and better policy for this. Um and uh flock actually has the ability to provide more detailed information where the cameras are, what they're, what what what's being searched through them, et cetera. It's a transparency portal of their own, so we're gonna be working to uh. We've with that that the transparency uh functions that flock offers into the transparency. Uh sections of our website that we've used, um how that's exactly gonna look is T P D. Uh but we believe that, you know, being as transparent as as possible is important with this, so. This is a series of developments that was a surprise, I think, when we implemented this program. The idea of out of state law enforcement utilizing it for things that, uh I might not go into all the details, but um it certainly was not what any of us envisioned. Uh when the program was brought in. That said, it has given us an opportunity with the 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 new administration, please. To give a thorough review and improve the system in ways that we think are gonna create better progress for the community. So that's my comment on it and unless anyone has any questions for me.
Any questions? I know Alden Roll would also like to discuss the. Alden Roll.
No, thank you, uh city administrator. I just have a short statement in this main. Uh and then a a quick request. Technology's rapid advance has only continued to accelerate over the course of our lifetimes. Bringing with it a seemingly never ending series of both exciting new capabilities and daunting new challenges. To date, perhaps no recent technology may be more consequential or disruptive than machine learning. Or the ability of software to change and adapt with use over time. The field of machine learning, of course, includes the techniques and technology that we know of as A I. The use of digital traffic cameras paired with machine learning, such as what is produced by companies like flock. Has allowed local law enforcement around the country to offset dwindling resource. Allowing them to track time far more broadly and effectively than they once could. It has also opened the door to new questions about the nature of surveillance and the ability of government to intrude upon individual privacy. Questions that require us as elected officials to seriously consider. How unregulated technology could impact the lives of American citizens. In recognition of this very problem, the state of Illinois passed House Bill three three two six last year. Which forbids state and local law enforcement from sharing data with out of state agencies. Who would penalize individuals for seeking abortion care or based on their immigration status. In particular, automated license plate reader technology or A L P Rs, like those made by flock. Were cited as a primary driver of the new legislation. This bill is the first of its kind in the country and is a great start. However, it does not go far in protecting our rights and privacy. It is out of respect to that general right to privacy that when we voted to authorize the use of this technology, we did add additional requirements. To ensure that the devices were being used not only in accordance with the law, but also both ethically and effectively. I very much appreciate the steps that the administration has taken in recent weeks to review the hundreds of open connections from out of state agencies. And I commend the uh providing of information here and and the review that was done in in a short amount of time. Uh I also appreciate the steps that are being taken to implement new policy. And I would like to ask that we collect all of that information at committee and review it. I'd like to put some of this. Information that's been provided in greater context. And until then, I'm recommending that we immediately limit the use of these cameras. To be only uh used by local police department or neighboring municipalities. Until we can review and discuss these proposals for policy regarding oversight. So that's, that's really it, as I would like to essentially restrict their use until we can have a thorough review. Uh to continue what the administrator is uh educated has already begun.
Thank you. Alden Fairwell. I uh very much appreciate Alden Roll's diligence in bringing this to the city's attention. Uh and I disappointed um at what has happened. Um I am as deeply concerned as he is and I'm not even sure that I'm comfortable with. Us sharing it with other agencies because I. Don't know that they have policies that won't result in our information being shared in ways we don't want it to be shared. And this is despite the fact that when we adopted the flock camera ordinance, I was very enthusiastic about the potential and. The fact that it has given us tremendous. Uh in protecting the citizens and cracking down criminals and, you know, preventing crime. So it's certainly. A powerful tool that if it's used correctly, um is an excellent tool. I'm afraid it has not been used correctly. And um I'm very disappointed in that and I think it has been um. Uh you know, to the detriment of our community. Uh for a tool that that should be have the actual the opposite effect. Um so I I would urge us to move very expeditiously on this and I frankly think that. Uh we should not be sharing any of our data with any agencies until we have our own policy that is effective and until we certify that any agency we share with has equally. Robust policy. Um this is no joke. This is our freedom and our privacy that's been violated here and has been violated for several years. Um we'll never know what the effects of that were, but I can tell you in the current environment, uh I'm very concerned about what could be done with this. By persons who don't have our best interest in heart. Um also, I just had a chance to review the letter here um that gives a make twenty five twenty five logic. And I must say, I do not understand what it's trying to tell us. So I appreciate the, you know, all the help we can get to to resolve this, um and hopefully can make this work better in the future. Thank you. Alden Johnson and Alden McGee.
Yes, I just wanted to know, I mean, thank uh Mr. Rogan about. Being going through with with uh this flock camera. But also in my uh in my ward, I had over six, five to six vehicles stolen. Uh most of them is high end vehicles, uh Hellcats. S R Ts, Jaguars, things of that nature that when they went on the on the uh crime spree. It wasn't thinking on these flock cameras because we can't actually go chase these guys down after they have a vehicle of this nature. So the flock cameras catch them stopping to get something to eat. Things of that nature, but and it cuts down on the liability. Uh of us as a whole, but I'm glad this is being a little more transparent because. Um as we know better, we're supposed to do better. And I'm glad it went through a few of those safety checks to make sure that we got in better shape everywhere.
Alden McGee. Um I can currently make up some of them. Um I think we should restrict the. To stabilize and that's what we can then reach out to our our neighboring communities and see if we can expand it those. Jared, David. Alse and Rob. And any other surrounding areas. Possibly maybe putting a radius, I don't know, that's these are that's available as far as, you know, we can send take requests from. And then seeing if the the national portion was unchecked, unregistered, am I correct? We would just, we would stop back from that. But I believe that's a good thing, just uh. Think that we should kinda tighten up a little bit in in the immediate, I think. Expand out.
Well, well, we need to check too, Alden McGee, that making sure that the next city is on board on what we're doing. Because if it wasn't for that, that camera, one hundred and thirty ninth and western would shoot out there. If it wasn't for the intergovernmental or free member of cities, let's just checking bounds, making sure they're on the same base that we are. With this, with this information being shared, there's also a life saving situation as well because they. Put in about forty three rounds. Out there with automatic weapons, but they caught. And it was the collaboration of Blue Island, Bowls and Airlock.
What have you not figured for a queue? You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie, um most of these things uh happen because we use it. Uh we are capable of finding people um and safely, a lot of these vehicles we stop. They uh they have weapons inside. I mean, we just, we just grabbed the Jeep not that long ago and it was a weapon inside. We had. Another situation where people are matched up, then we grabbed the car and we grabbed it going on. These things are saving lives. I mean, and I know there needs to be some responsibility, I respect that, but they do save lives.
I think the conversation like Alden Roll mentioned will be discussed next committee meeting.
Sure.
The stop gas in place or or rate that is done automatically or.
I mean, and and you know, I've only been here, we started this about twenty days ago, uh we're in twenty days. We're going, we and Dennis going through everything, step by step, like you normally would when a regime change changes over. We observed this, we brought it to the attention. And uh we're we're moving forward.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alden Fairwell.
I I just wanna be real clear that I uh. We have to get out what the flock camera has done for the city. And I wanna see us get back to being able to use it as fast as we can and I regret that we're not able to use it right now. Um yeah, if it's been handled differently, we wouldn't be in this situation, so.
Alright, anything else we need a motion to go into executive? Alden Roll, second Alden Matoya, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Regular session. All my deeds, I follow Johnson, all people say aye.
Aye.
We can talk about property issues and hidden problems with the gate. Is there a motion to adjourn? Albert Johnson, well.